Will the court please call the roll?
No, I...
Here.
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 Here. Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2015. Approval of claims in the amount of $99,558.69 and payroll expenses of $96,155.96. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move second.
Have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Benson to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is reports from boards and officers. Sanitation committee meeting from November 2nd. Council...
Let's see. That was after our last council meeting. We talked about our transfer station and they were having their final walk-through and it was last Friday, the 13th. And that was a good day to have a walk-through, wasn't it? And found out we had to do one more item before we can open that up, but that's in the works to get that taken care of. We also talked about purchasing or looking at purchasing just, we're not sure if that would be soon or in a year or two, poly carts, which would be trash cans for the homes, residential trash cans where there are wheels and lids. Our trucks are capable of actually lifting those and dumping them on the back instead of the employees having to lift the cans and dump them themselves. Is that about it?
We'd use REIT funds to, REIT grant funds to...
Yeah, apply for a REIT grant to buy some of those poly carts. Okay. That's about our meeting.
Anybody have any questions for Councilman Benson?
How...
Can we save that for the end of the meeting? Please.
We save that for the end of the meeting.
Council members, I'm sorry. But you sure may ask it at the end of the meeting. Library board meeting from November 3rd. Councilman Valencia?
Very routine meeting. I have lots worth of discussion and upgrades that they continue to make technology-wise and then their E-Rate filing for next year, which is their discount to be able to provide Internet service to patrons and to themselves. But other than that, very short.
You may have any questions for Councilman Valencia? All right. Councilman Miller, would you give the airport board meeting report and the finance committee meeting reports, please?
The airport board meeting, we had some routine business, but we had something to follow after reports on the recommendation on a change order for the construction that's happening out at the airport. We also had election of officers out there and a new board member started at that meeting. There was some discussion about existing policies that had not been enforced and the discussion turned to if those policies had ever been recorded in the minutes. And I know that we've got some work at City Hall to find those minutes to see if any of those policies were actually ever recorded or if it was just somebody bringing in a piece of paper and saying, hey, this is supposed to be a policy. And the current board did not have anybody that was on the former board that had apparently made these decisions 20, 25 years ago. So they're looking back into minutes to see what has actually taken place back then. Other than that, the airport board meeting was fairly routine. There was an update. The sprinkler system's been installed and approval for the lighting of the flagpole will take place. For the finance committee, we just finished that meeting. We had, went over financials. We're looking at sales tax revenues that are down and we're not critical yet, as Joe Don will explain, but we're definitely going to start looking at that very closely over the next six months as we start to finish out our budget year and be looking at what we're going to be doing next year if we have to make any cuts or anything like that in the future. So we'll start looking at that now to try to avoid any shortfalls in the future. We're fine right now. We have, we do have money put back, but we're just watching that sales tax revenue slowly dwindle down from what it was over the last couple of years. We looked over the cash and investments, purchase orders. We got an update on the water sewer tables. Joe Don has been working with governmental and schools, government agencies and schools to make sure that that does not have a significant impact on their budgets this year. Joe Don can probably report on that better about how that's going. We did have an update on the new construction development behind Walmart. We do have a block plan and are starting to look at what's going to take place over there in the next coming months. And we didn't have anything after that that we were able to discuss before we hit the open airs. If there's any questions, I'll look at that. We didn't have any large claims this period. We had our payroll claims that made up the majority of our claims, but nothing, no large outstanding claims that we've made to take notice.
Anybody have any questions for Councilman Miller? Thank you. As far as my report goes, I'll report on, Dr. Haniford and I attended a meeting with the core group, conserving our ranger environment, I believe is the acronym, that they had a large turnout for a discussion on recycling. There was quite a bit of information shared there from other communities as well as our neighbors up in Kiowa on, you know, some of the high points and the challenges that communities have faced with regard to recycling. I do know that there are at least, you know, a handful or a couple handful of people that have stopped me and asked me about recycling in Alva. They do recycle themselves and take their materials to other communities in order to do so. You know, we learned a lot, I think, in that meeting. We, and I feel like, and I'll, if Dr. Haniford has anything to add, I feel like there could be some potential opportunities for us as a community, whether that's a city opportunity or whether that's a citizen opportunity, but for recycling here in Alva. Other than that, I've had a few phone calls and people stop me remarking on street projects. Actually, all pats on the back what I've heard this go around. So share that with the street department, please, and also, I believe that's, I believe that's it. Does anybody have any questions? All right. We'll do the city business managers' report. Mr. Dunham?
Well, what I'll start off with giving you a brief description of what I informed the finance committee about for our finance report. Through the month of October, we're about 33% of the budget year. During this same timeframe, we've collected about 28, 29% of what we had budgeted to be collected and we have expended about 41% of what we had planned to spend. As Councilman Miller informed you, we are watching the sales tax revenues very closely. This is something that, of course, is the lifeblood of the city of Alva and our operations. Currently, we're about 5% down from where we expected to be. We were expecting a drop in sales tax. And that puts us back to about the same level we had received through this timeframe through October and February of '13, '14, so two years ago. Some of our intergovernmental collections are down due to decline in receivables from both the state of Oklahoma and one-time monies from grants. Our miscellaneous revenues are down from last year due to one-time receivables for our lease purchase reimbursements. As far, you know, as far as our expenditures go, the most glaring discrepancy we have is in our 14, is from our 14, 15 capital outlay. Currently, the city is either contract, well, currently the city is contracted for three infrastructure projects which account for about 65% of our $2.6 million capital improvement budget. All of these funds were either collected in previous years or will be reimbursed from grants which we've already been awarded. So that's a long way of saying we've either had the money to spend for these projects and earmarked for these projects, or we're going to get reimbursed for at least 90% of these projects, the grant funds. These projects that I'm talking about are the two airport projects and the water meter replacement project. If we take these expenditures out of the equation and look at what our comparison between what we've had this year and last year for just our general operating cost, right now we're at about 9% below what our general operating costs were last budget year through October. So the thing that's driving our expenses is our capital improvements, not necessarily our operational expenditures. Over the past couple of weeks, I've been attending meetings with different governmental and school entities to discuss water rate changes that we anticipate happening in toward the July timeframe of 2016. I've explained to the entities on how much water they currently use, what they've historically used, and what this rate increase, a proposed rate increase would do to their actual costs. And it varies from entity to entity. They all were understanding as to why this needs to happen and we're working to keep this impact down to a minimum on all of the entities that we've got. As we get closer to wanting to present that to council for approval, I'll bring that forward and, but that's, we're looking at the July, you know, probably before council gets that probably May or June before that comes back before the council. Our AMR project is currently going along fairly well there about 20, currently, as of today at 5:00, about 27% through the city as far as meter installations are concerned. We expect them to have software, come in this week to do software installations and equipment installations for our vehicles. Once this is done, we can go and check and see and make sure everything is readable, that we don't have to go back and raise some meters or look at ways to make sure, we'll look at ways that those meters are for sure red. May have to look at some, talking to Russell today, may have to look at some plastic lids and replace some lids, depending on if we can raise the meter or not, but we're currently, we really won't know that till we have that, some of that software installed, which I expect to be this week. The airport extension project, engineers have told me that all the work that was to be completed by the city of Alva or contracted for from external, externally, has been completed. And as of Friday, the 13th, the entire construction site was turned over to Nash Construction. Notice to proceed was given to Nash Construction on November 3rd. They've got till February 11th to complete the project. Once, if they go past the February 11th day, it's $1,000 a day in liquidated damages. Last Friday, last Thursday, I met with the 522 district task force. Now, if you recall, that task force was established back in April of 2015 to determine whether a recommendation could be made to the Woods County Commissioners to move forward with the 522 district. At this time, I do expect, well, we do expect a recommendation to move forward with that as a committee. We are currently formulating, the commissioners that ask us to have a proposed election question formulated for their review. And we're currently talking with the attorney to get that developed. Let's see. We are talking with the county about the potential purchase of a asphalt paver. They're going to be getting rid of their paver. Part of the discussion today with the finance committee was how we were going to pay for that. I've got some information to relay to the street committee. Hopefully, we'll have a proposal for that in a future meeting. The, do want to recognize some folks. They were recognized at the Chamber Gala last, when was that? Cup, last week? Last Thursday? Citizens of distinction for the city of Alva that were awarded were Kirk Treacle at the fire department, Ron Vasquez from the police department, and Crystal Laviya from the ambulance department, EMS department. If you see any of these folks, please tell them you realize that they're doing a good job and congratulate them on their recommendation, on their recognition. On Friday, the 13th, we did open up the water, the water line replacement bid for Young Street. That, we had four bidders for that project. Prices ranged anywhere from $323,000 to $630,000 roughly. Had bidders from Washington, Oklahoma, Enid, Oklahoma, all the way up to Joplin, Missouri. So I'm real pleased with the outcome of that. The apparent low bidder is Luckinville from Enid. We are still evaluating those bids before we can come back with a recommendation. Plan to have a recommendation at the December 7th meeting. I believe that's a Monday. For that project, the good thing, we, the engineer's estimate for that project was, for construction, was $427,000. Of course, the apparent low bidder is 323. We were expecting to take some money out of reserves. We've got roughly $290,000 left out of our construction funds for the water line, for the water line replacement that we'd gotten for water line projects. Long story short, instead of coming up with 100-plus thousand dollars for construction for that project, we'll have to come up out of pocket, out of reserves, 48 or so. The Sealing Street Water Line Project is slated to start after December 1st. And of course, the recommendations, water meter project. That would be my report at this time. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Council have any questions for Mr. Dunham?
Joe Don, regarding progress on the street projects, percentage-wise, how close are we to what we set out our goal this year?
Well, our goal was, we've only completed half the year. So, I mean, our goal was for the full, the physical year, not just the calendar year. And right now, we estimate that we're about 50% done. Met with street department this year, this morning about different projects. Right now, they've, you know, they've completed all the street repairs that they can get done right now because we can no longer get oil. The oil plants have shut down. Right now, we're working on curbing alleys. We're working on cracked ceiling streets to get, to get everything prepped up and ready to go for springtime. There are a couple of places where we had milled up the street a little bit and then the street ended up failing and we're going to have to go back in and repair those before we can do the overlays. That is slated to happen this, over these winter months to get those, those things cut up so we can hit the ground running in April and May and get the rest of our projects finished. We're doing milling, we're doing some milling up on 12th Street in that area in prep for next year to get some of that milling out of the way so we can come back in when we're ready to do our either chip and seal or whatever we need to do over that and get that completed in as timely manner as possible and as quickly as possible.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Item number seven is discuss and vote to approve the Alva Airport Commission's recommendation on change order number one from Nash Construction and Garver Engineering on AIP number 3-40-0003-010-2014 in the amount of negative $188,830.
This was discussed at the airport commission meeting and what this does, what this change order does, and it was presented back when we originally accepted the contract, it reduces the rough dirt work out of the Nash Construction bid, which was originally around $705,000, and it reduces that down into the more manageable budget that we had for our grant funds and our project funds, back down to the $570,000 that we were, that we got grant funds for. The airport commission did go ahead and make that recommendation, but it was all part of, it was all part of our negotiations to get that project down to a funding area that we could get reimbursed for at least out of, if not out of this year, but at least out of some of our next, next year's grant funding. So I would recommend that the airport, I mean, the council approve the airport's recommendation. I had to make that recommendation.
So will the city of Alva be doing the excavation then?
That excavation is finished. We partnered, we either did, we, we had to do some of it ourselves. We did have to haul in about 290 ton of rock, but the county partnered with us to do that. That, and like I said, that, all that third-party work, either that we were going to do or that we were going to have to hire an external company to do, has been completed and that entire project now has been turned over to Nash Construction for completion.
Very good. Would there be a motion to approve the airport commission's recommendation?
I make a motion to approve the Alva Airport Commission's recommendation on change order number one from Nash Construction and Garver Engineering on AIP 3-40-0003-010-2014 in the amount of negative $188,830. $188,830.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Milton, to approve the Alva Airport Commission's recommendation on change order number one as stated. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item number eight is discussion and action to approve new agreement for administration of the sales and use tax ordinance and an agreement to engage in compliance activities with the Oklahoma Tax Commission for the city of Alva.
Well, the, by state statute, the city of Alva is required to contract with the Oklahoma Tax Commission for the collection of sales and use tax, city sales and use tax. And the OML's, Oklahoma Municipal League's liaison, tax commission liaison board began working in January of 2015 on some, the revision of two documents that we currently have with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. One being our agreement for administration and another being our agreement to engage in compliance activities. The board first began looking at this, well, I should say, began looking at this in 2013 and wrapped it up in 2015. Began looking at this, but we put it aside as a board, as a liaison board, which I am a member of, to get House Bill 1875 drafted and adopted. And as you recall, we talked about this. Once this was adopted, this lowered our retainage from the tax commission for collecting our taxes from 1.5 to a half a percent. What this, you know, I've outlined all the, I've outlined everything that is new in this Over the next couple of pages, next three or four pages, there are several things that are new. One of the biggest things that it does, it does take what is now two documents and brings it down into one. It does allow us to go out and with the permission of the Oklahoma Tax Commission to do some compliance auditing if we so choose to do that. We do have to take some steps that we have not taken if we choose to do that compliance auditing as far as designate, the designation of a representative and the approval. But it also, what I also wanted to kind of point out is through this, it brought out, through this development and through working with the tax commission, it's brought out one big thing. Basically, there are two gentlemen in the state of Oklahoma that work for the Oklahoma Tax Commission that are engaged in municipal compliance for sales tax collections. One of those gentlemen works exclusively for the Oklahoma City and the Tulsa areas and the other one that is designated as a local tax collector, it works for every other city, works with every other city in the state of Oklahoma. So the Oklahoma Tax Commission does rely on the individual cities to put out or give them information and provide for them information where we see anomalies in our sales tax collections, where we think, where we think things aren't exactly right. One of the other things that it's done is it's taking the trigger amount, it used to be, before we got a notification for refunds, that we were going to be having to pay money back that had been remitted to us in error, that dollar figure used to be $10,000. And that, it was an important thing to get changed because for Oklahoma Cities, the Tulsas, the Edmonds, the Normans of the world of our state, $10,000 isn't a lot of money. Now, that's not a tangible amount for their sales tax. But it, when it comes down to the city of Alva's sales tax, when it comes down to the city of Weatherford's sales tax collections, when it comes down to communities smaller than ours such as Freedom and Winoka, that $10,000 is a huge impact on their budget and is something that is sometimes very hard to absorb. And so it's taken that, that notification level down from 10,000 to 2,000. It's also given communities... It's also given communities, such as ours, the ability to go in and do some sales tax analysis to make sure that we are getting what we should be getting so we can start breaking down the top ten, the top twenty, sales tax remitters and doing some sort of analysis on that to make sure that we're not seeing anything come in large or, or taken away that shouldn't have been taken away, as far as a refund is concerned. It allows us to do some analysis and to question things before it becomes an issue for us in our revenue stream. But it's given us a lot more abilities to do some of those, some of those analyses and engage in some of those compliance activities. And everything that this contract gives us is already, it just, it's, gives us in a contract form, it's already provided for us either in state, it's already provided to us through state legislation, we just need to take action on it if we so choose to do so. I would recommend that the city council pass this, this agreement for administration of sales and use tax ordinances in city of towns and an agreement to engage in compliance activities for the city of Alva. And I'd happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Do we have to hire somebody to do that?
Depends on the type of compliance auditing we want to do. Yes, there are companies out there that do compliance auditing for municipalities. There are auditing companies out there that do that, and we can engage them. If we do engage them to do that, we have to front the money, but we get, for anything that's recovered and anything that gets recovered, because not only are we recovering money for the city of Alva, we would be recovering money for the state of Oklahoma, we get to recoup some of those administrative fees through the, the compliance activities of this contract. So yes, we could, we have to front it, but we can get some of it back. Let the, on the backside.
Well, it'd be some type of example, what, you know, saying that you find that somebody you have to pay sales tax, if they sell items and just didn't report it, or water?
Usually, that's the case, is that they are, they are remitting reports that either are, that are unusually small in sales, and we can go back and do a historical search to see what, through some of our confidential reports that we get, we can go in and see what companies are, what businesses are remitting to the city of Alva for sales tax. If we see a company that has a big drop, we can question that. If we see big increases, we can call and question those too, because that's, that's, that's a potential for overpayment that we're gonna have to refund sometime in the future. But it allows us to do some analysis where we can do a company by company, or even an industry-wide, by industry-wide analysis to see if we see things that don't look right. We are the ones in our community, we are the ones that are here, we're driving in our community every day. If we drive through and see, if we drive around town and we see our hotels, parking lots are full, but yet we're not getting, yet we see our, as an industry, we see our hotel sales tax remittance dropping, we can say, okay, something doesn't look right here. Because two months ago, I know that they were full, their parking lot was full, and now they're not, they're telling me they didn't collect any money, any sales tax? Something's not right there. And we can go either company by company or industry by industry and make some of those determinations. And then we can report, we can either engage in compliance audits ourselves, or we can turn around and report that to the Oklahoma Tax Commission, and they are then obligated to come down and withhold their part of the contract, which is compliance. Now, we can probably get it done faster than the Oklahoma Tax Commission can get it done, if we, if we so choose to do that. That's the reason that's put back into our tool chest, so to speak. But yeah, there, I mean, we get a report of delinquent sales taxpayers, we get a report of sales tax remitters that owe us money. At last month's report, citywide, there was roughly twenty-nine to thirty thousand dollars that was owed to the city of Alva in sales tax that had not been remitted from consumers. They had remitted the reports, so that they weren't, so it wasn't throwing them into a delinquent status yet with the Oklahoma Tax Commission, that they had not remitted funds.
Really, while we're talking about, doesn't really have anything to do with that because that's already reported. Any idea what it costs to hire somebody to do the analysis?
Depends on the company that we're, that we're doing, that we're doing it on. You know, if we're talking about the local business, you know, a local one-owner business, I'm gonna, I'm gonna estimate costs for compliance audit around twenty thousand dollars. If we're talking about a company with multiple locations, it could be closer to sixty or eighty thousand to do that compliance audit, because not only would they have to go in and look at the compliance efforts in the city of Alva, they would have to look at every location that that business is in. So it depends on the scope that we're asking for.
But we could easily be upside down on hiring someone, but they don't find us and then we, we basically?
If I understand you correctly, though, this, this agreement does not obligate us to a third party?
No, it does, it does not obligate us to do that. It gives us the authority to go out and engage in compliance audits if we choose. It does not obligate us to a compliance audits, yes.
Will the compliance audit require council approval?
Yes. I mean, we would need to, we would have a engagement agreement to go do that. They would come back to this council to approve that engagement, the same as we do every, our audit any year. It'd be a typical audit contract. But other than that, it allows the sales tax commission to continue to collect our sales tax and remit that back to us and gives us a little bit more power to police ourselves
I would entertain a motion to approve the agreements as discussed.
I make a motion to approve the new agreement for administration of the sales and use tax ordinance and an agreement to engage in compliance activities with the Oklahoma Tax Commission for the city of Alva.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Valencia, to approve new agreement for administration of sales and use tax ordinance and an agreement to engage in compliance activities with the Oklahoma Tax Commission for the city of Alva. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item number nine is discuss and vote to request the refund of the unused fiscal year 2012, 2013 loss fund from O-MAG in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty cents.
This works, this works back to our 2012, 2013 workers' comp claims, and because we had a favorable claim year, O-MAG took a hundred and sixty, I mean, sixty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty cents and deposited into the city of Alva's escrow account that we have with them. Upon the request of the city, this amount can be utilized in three different ways. It can be, it can be one, either stay in the escrow account and it'll be, it'll go to reduce our next year's workers' compensation program, a premium. We can vote to take that credit against our current premium, providing we're on a payment plan, which we are, and we owe, and paying greater than five thousand dollars, which we are. Or we can request the amount in the form of a refund. The finance committee is requesting that the city council approve the request for refund in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. That brings it back into our budget and allows us to utilize it for infrastructure needs or any other need that we should see fit in the way that money is spent. But it does take a vote of the council, and those minutes being remitted to O-MAG before they will just, before they remit that money to us. So at this time, I would ask that the council uphold the finance committee's recommendation to request the refund from O-MAG.
I make a motion to request the refund from O-MAG in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents.
And I will ask Councilman Benson if he meant to say sixty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty cents.
That's not what I said, that's what I meant to say.
Okay. And?
I will second that.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right, I have a motion from Councilman Benson, a second by Dr. Haniford, to request the refund of the unused 2012, 2013 loss fund from O-MAG in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Okay, item ten is discussion and action on the update and revision of the city of Alva ordinance, chapter twelve, business.
At this time, we're asking the city council to assign, maybe to a committee, the revision of chapter twelve businesses of our city ordinances to develop. This current ordinance is, was passed in nineteen ninety-four, as near as I can tell, and it appears to be very dated. It references some things that I'm not even sure what are, such as licenses requirements for box ball. I'm not sure, I wasn't sure until I was talking with Councilman Benson today what a box ball entity was. But some of these things, some of the, the fees that we have that are associated with these licenses, and some of the license requirements that we have are very dated, and this ordinance needs to be reviewed and possibly revamped.
You know, there's?
Yes. Go ahead.
No, no, this looks very similar to the things that were brought from the council a few weeks ago regarding licensing programs at that time. There was no action taken by the council, no motion taken on that. Why are you? Are there two visits?
Requested by the mayor and a few other councilmen that we revisit it.
There's things in here that prevent, I use, take section twelve twenty-nine, it's unlawful to any person to sell or offer for sale at retail any commodity from a truck, trailer or other vehicle while parked on a city street or alley in the city. We could have had probably three food trucks here last Friday for the art walk, had that been something that our ordinances would allow. Why not bring our ordinances up to date?
Obviously, a problem with a transient business is if you start bringing in like Bollum Alley and some of those others, like pawn shop where, thanks, this here, pawn brokers are paid license already, why?
This, this is our current ordinance, the way it is in place right now.
Correct. Yes.
I think that's why we're wanting to put it towards the committee, so they can look at it and remove some of the stuff that does not need to be in it, and update some of the stuff that's in it to more appropriate.
Yeah, I think it's important, twenty years ago, we weren't all carrying cell phones, surfing the internet and buying on the eBay. I think it's time to bring our ordinance into, into the, into our current business infrastructure and make sure that we're doing the best we can with our ordinances, to make sure that we're not prohibiting businesses from coming in and that we're, we're up to date. I mean, it's not a big deal to make sure our ordinance are up to date. We have ordinances that are fifty, sixty years old that we're not looking at, but who can say they're not outdated too? This is just one section. I think it's important to look at that and make sure that we're up to date with everything that's going on with current business. And I don't think sending it to a committee is anything, we're not, we're not issuing statements that we're gonna start licensing every business, we're sending it to a committee. What committee would you recommend to go to?
My first, my first thought, because it does, it does address the, the issues of collection of licenses and issuance of licenses, and there's a financial component to that, I'd say the, the finance committee, but also to be reviewed probably by the planning committee. Planning and zoning to make sure that we aren't doing something through ordinance that would prohibit us from doing something in our planning, that's outlined in our planning and zoning. So maybe need to be looked at at least a couple of different entities, committees. But we don't have an economic development committee, so to speak, that may address some of this. And it could be, maybe it's not an existing committee, maybe it's a combination of councilmen from different committees individually, and we have something else, I mean, it'd be something else that y'all need to look at in another meeting we would need to have, but maybe it doesn't get assigned to a specific committee, but to a separate group of councilmen that don't make up a quorum, of course, to analyze this section of our ordinances and make a recommendation back to the council.
Would the council be willing to, to appoint a couple of local business owners to serve on a working purpose? To get their opinions and thoughts?
I was gonna state that we, we could allow the mayor to appoint members of certain planning, finance, business, whatever, to a special committee to look at this. Is that, I've been along on what you were thinking?
I'm open, I'm willing, I mean, I'm, if the council wants to do this, I'm willing to work with whoever to, to bring our ordinances up to, up to the caliber that they should be for our community.
And, and I was, as you look at our committees, I mean, they're, you know, I don't know if it's standard in some communities that they have, you know, review committees for all of their ordinances or, or, you know, I, if that's a council committee, if it's a, just a task force, I know that there are times when there's committees put together, for instance, looking for a business manager, there was, I believe, a committee put together consisting of citizens and council members, is that correct? So I would, I would be happy to bring back the recommendation of council members and citizens for designation of a committee for this body to approve and to review, you know, this ordinance and potentially other ordinances.
I'd get the good blanket wide as far as all ordinances, to go, you know, find some committee to just start going through.
I mean, we've got several ordinances that need to be reviewed. One of them is our zoning and, our zoning ordinance, there have been some new laws state at the state level that have come in, that impact our building codes that need to be reviewed. Maybe, you know, our ordinances need to be gone through a thing.
I'd kinda like to have the, or have the mayor at least have the discretion to be able to look at it. We're gonna look at certain different, you know, we have ordinances that are not necessarily maybe people that would be more specifically in tune with that ordinance. For each one of those, they're going to go through instead, I mean, that would be my first thought. I'm not opposed to just saying, hey, come up with a board that'll go through all of these. But I think then you're still going to have to send it to certain committees that might deal specifically with those ordinances. But it might be three different boards that look at three different ordinances. But I'd like to have it, but it seems to me we should have the mayor's ability to pick who he wants. You know, for this one, I can see where you would want maybe a member of Finance Committee, Planning Commission, local business owners, those that are going to be directly impacted financially if something were to change as opposed to zoning, which may, may involve more residential structure.
The item is regarding this Chapter 12. We would need to bring back another meeting to establish a committee.
You can actually, they can, if they want to do what Wes is suggesting, it could be a motion which we author, you as mayor, to appoint a committee for this purpose.
I'll make a motion to give the mayor authority to pick three council members and two business people at large to look at this ordinance number 12 business.
As part of the discussion, Joe Don mentioned the planning and zoning. Do you want to have them? I mean, it also seems to me that maybe our economic development specialist in Alex might be somebody that we might need to be a part of that.
I assume we would have access to staff?
Yeah, staff would be available, I mean, and Alex, as our economic development specialist, would be available to this committee as a staff member, same as I would be.
Well, even that committee could come up with something and then Alex would hand it off to some of these other entities, committees that would have begged and let them, but they're into at least, and then have them put back and stuff, just the back and forth.
Okay, well, I have...
I guess, are you wanting to keep it to five members, is that your thought?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to, I mean, three councilor, do you want to let him have the discretion to?
We have a motion, Senate over still discussing. I'm just telling you that you have to vote on this motion.
My, my thought is to have three councilmen and two business people at large, like I said. Because three's usually what sets on a committee that we talked about. So I just thought three and then two others would be good.
As has been pointed out, we do have a motion by Councilman Benson, a second by Councilman Eckhart, to have a mayoral appointment of a committee consisting of three council members, two at large, and two at-large business members, representatives to update and, and recommend update and revision of the City of Alva Ordinance, Chapter 12, Business. Sound right?
Correct.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Item number 11 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker. Speaker must identify himself or herself. Mr. Scrivener, do you still have an inquiry for?
Yeah, I think so. Nothing, I'm Jim Scrivener. I just wondered on the trash job, plastic containers, are there going to be one for every house or do we have one for every third house?
No, we're talking about one for every house.
Is there a possibility, I've been to some cities where they have, besides plastic containers, they have recycled containers right there with it, but another crew comes over one day and picks up?
We, we haven't looked into that, but that's not out of the, out of the possibility someday.
Anyone else?
I'm on the, I don't know, I don't know anything about Chapter 12 ordinance. Can we create a copy of the Chapter 12 ordinance?
I'd be happy to give you my copy.
You can pick those up, I'll just sit in the office.
They're available on the website. They're online also.
I may have got the pages out of order, but they're all there.
Cheryl Brown, and the question I have is about the sales tax thing. I didn't even know that was coming up to mind, but I, I mean, I've been in business almost worth of 10 years and I've had the guy coming in audit me several times. So why would we have you guys do what he's doing now?
We're not saying that we would do it. The current, with the revisions to the contract, allow for communities to do that if they so choose. There are some communities that choose to do their own compliance audit. I'm not saying that we would do it at all, but there are some communities within the state of Oklahoma that do their compliance audit.
Is there somebody in particular, those dollar amounts are pretty high, is there somebody in particular? Because then we'd have to be dealing with a lot of retail ordinance to have that amount missing or not submitted. You said $10,000 was missing? From last month to...
Well, no, no, what I said was, right now, it take, before the Tax Commission is obligated to tell me that they are going to take money from me and my sales tax because of a refund that they have issued, it's a $10, it's a $10,000 limit. What the contract does is it reduces that limit from $10,000 to $2,000. So now the tax, once we've signed this and this is a statewide agreement, once we've signed it, the Sales Tax Commission is required to report to me for every amount over $2,000 that they're going to take from me and give it to some, give it back as a refund.
And you're going to audit each one of those or just as you see fit?
Well, I mean, as the council sees fit that we, that we need to do compliance audit, we would do compliance audit. I do not anticipate that we're going to take on any of those, any of those activities right now. The contract does give us the ability to go out and hire somebody to do that compliance audit for us if we so choose. My first inclination is that...
Is this a random thing or would you just target specific?
It would be specific, we would have to, have a compliance audit for a specific business.
And it would come from, you guys or from the state?
Well, if we contracted for it, we would initiate that compliance audit. They would report back to us. They would be, if, if there were any collections there, they would collect for us, for the state, for the county, they'd collect for everybody. But if there were any refunds that, any, any monies that weren't...
You don't have a list now of who has submitted their sales tax reports but not paid?
Yes, I have that list.
Okay. And that's what you would go after first or that's what you're, that's why you want this?
Well, I want the sales, I want the, I want the...
I don't want the money, but I'm just saying...
I mean, I want the contract...
Why do you want your own control over it?
Huh? I'm sorry.
Is that why you want your own control over it?
I'm not saying that I want my own control of it. I'm saying there are some communities that do want that control. And this contract gives those communities that control. The Sales Tax Commission has one contract with every community in the state of Oklahoma. It's the same contract. And we have revised that contract where it now hopefully meets the need of every community, large or small, and gives them the ability to do, gives that, gives that community that is 1,000 people and wants to do that type of work for their compliance audits the same authority as it gives the Oklahoma cities and Tulsas of the world, of the state.
And this, but this is new for Alva?
No, we've had a contract every year for the collection of our sales tax. The state law reads, was changed a couple of years ago where it said municipalities may contract with the state to change to municipalities shall contract with the state for munis, for sales tax collections. Tulsa went through a lawsuit and lost that like, the modification of that language. So we are required to contract with the...
So if they needed to, they would call you a year ago?
No, I would, no, we would contact them, say, we want to go audit this company. And they would say, they would say, okay, you're not going to step on our toes. If they are already engaged in compliance audit for that company, they would come back and tell us, no, we've already, we're already engaged in compliance audit in that. You're overstepping your bounds, you're not going, we're not going to allow you to do that, that compliance audit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I guess I do have one more flag, and I may be overstepping right now, too. When you choose two business, when you're not going to license it, changing the licensing rules, I'd like to volunteer to be one of them unless you see some reason why I shouldn't.
I will keep that, thank you, I'll keep that in consideration. All right. Item number 12 is remarks and inquiries by council members.
Wednesday, the gun range is having a open house and ribbon cutting, 11:30. They're feeding lunch as well, so if you have to be down there and look at that, Wednesday, 11:30 to noon, it's a good time to go down there and take a look at it, there's free lunch, too. Sorry? Wednesday, yes. Sorry, that's the 18th?
Yes.
I'd just like to commend the Alva Police Department the other day when we had that escaped prisoner, how the quickness that they got ahold of all the schools, how quick they got hold of the schools, got us on lockdown, got us notified that there was a problem within mere minutes of it happening. And I just thought that that was a very commendable effort on the part of the Alva Police Department, keeping our, our schools and our children safe.
Any other councilman remarks? All right, well, I will just close by wishing everybody happy Thanksgiving while we're out. See you back in December, but we'll close the meeting of the city council and open the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Miller?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Item number three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2015, approval of claims in the amount of $19,697.41 and payroll expenses of $23,696.32. Is there a motion?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Benson, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
We'll close the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority and open the meeting of the Alva Economic Development Authority. Please call the roll.
Milton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Item number three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2015, and approval of claims in the amount of $10,123.69 and payroll expenses of $5,715.61. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Benson, a second by Councilman Miller, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right, and we will adjourn.